Notice made available to the township clerk, notice sent to the Curry News and the Star Ledger. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Tillery?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Reggio?
You're muted, Roy.
Yes.
He's trying.
Here.
Mr. Blount? Mr. Hidaka? I know already he's here. There he is. Mr. Minarondo?
Here.
Mr. Ali?
Here.
And Chairman Cahill?
Here. Will everyone please stand for a salute to the flag?
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Mr. Kenealy, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, there are. The application of Arnaldo Caraza, 1438 West Fourth Street is adjourned until June 23rd, 2022. He must notice. The application of BJ Singapore, 442nd, Second Avenue, is postponed until June 9th, 2022. They noticed for this evening, so no further notice is required. That matter will not be heard tonight. The only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight. That's all that I have at this time.
Okay.
Announcements. Join the meeting.
Let's get started with item number six, 22 dash ZB dash 27B, Mohamed Tau Fik.
Tau Fik, how's everybody doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, yourself, sir. Thanks.
Sorry, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? The testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Mohamed Tau Fik, 968 East Lincoln Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey, 08854.
Mr. Tau Fik, could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
So I'm looking to, uh, to place a fence on the perimeter of my, uh, of my residence, uh, within the municipal easement, and that's why I'm applying for variance today.
And you understand that if the township ever needs access to that easement, it would be your responsibility to remove and replace that fence at your expense?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other issues for the applicant.
Uh, do we have to address anything on the site impact?
Well, apparently there's an issue with, uh, perhaps the location of a neighbor's fence. Um, and Mr. Hinterstein pointed out that that is really not something that the zoning board gets involved in. Um, he can contact the, the code enforcement, uh, and, and deal with that. But that's a neighborly dispute and they're gonna have to work that out. Do you understand that, Mr. Tau Fik?
I've rectified that already with my name.
You should have stopped me.
We'd like to hear you talk, Jim. Yeah. Any other members of the board have any questions for this, uh, applicant? Any comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public portion have any questions or comments for this application? Ms. Buckley?
No, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application.
Out of second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount? Nope, he's absent. Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Tau Fik, your application's been approved. Uh, we'll memorialize it in a written document at our meeting in two weeks. You don't need to be present for that. We'll mail that document to you and you'll need that for your permits.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Have a good night.
Let's move on to item number seven, 22 dash ZB dash 30V, Jawad Hafiz.
Yes, I'm here.
Hello, sir.
Sorry, I swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I am.
Name and address, please?
Jawad Hafiz, number four Strawberry Lane, Piscataway, New Jersey, 08854, zip code.
Thank you. Mr. Hafiz, could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
Hello?
Yes, could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
Hello?
Did you lose the signal, Mr. Faziz?
Hello?
We, we could hear him.
Yeah.
I don't think he could hear us.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Could you explain to the board what you would like to do?
Yeah, I'm trying to install a fence on my property line, which is on the easement side. So that's the reason I just applied for variance application.
And do you understand that if the township needs access to that, you would be responsible for the cost of removing and replacing that fence?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Sorry, guys, baby dog sitting.
Okay, and, uh, oh, Mr. Hafiz, uh, Mr. Hinterstein also pointed out that you should install the fence such that it does not block the flow of groundwater?
Yes.
And you, you're agreeable to that?
Correct, yes, I, I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Any other members of the board have any questions for this applicant or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public portion have any comments or questions about this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
None? Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application?
Out of second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Hafiz, your application has been granted. We will memorialize it in a written document at our meeting in two weeks. You don't need to be present for that. We will mail that document to you and you'll need that to get your permits.
I think you froze.
Did you hear that, sir?
I think you froze again. Uh, Chairman, I just want to put on the record, Mr. Blount is now with us in the meeting.
Awesome. Okay. Okay, Mr. Faziz? Have a great night.
You too. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Bye bye.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number eight, 22 dash ZB dash 31V, that's Cesar Jose.
Mr. Jose, are you present?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are you both gonna be testifying tonight?
I'll be your partner, sir.
Are you both gonna be testifying tonight?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, I need to swear both of you in. Could you each raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. One at a time, could you give me your name and address, please?
This is my husband, my spouse, I will live at 40 Cumberland Road, Piscataway, New Jersey, 08854.
Thank you. Could one of you, you can put your hands down. Could one of you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
Yes, sir. Our old shed was very, very old, rusted, and, uh, so many holes and dilapidated. And, uh, we want to have a very brand new shed installed and to store our tools and equipment for all year round season. And right now, our equipment is in the open, uh, exposing to the sun and the snow and, and the, uh, the rain. And they look pathetic. And, uh, we're so worried about, uh, having them laying down, uh, the yard. We need a shed desperately, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Hinterstein does not raise any concerns about this application?
Yeah, I noticed that on the site impact as well. Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions for this application? Or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the, uh, public. Anyone in the public portion have any questions or comments about this application?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Chairman.
Okay, no, that's okay. Um, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion and I'm gonna make a, a motion to approve this application.
Out of second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. and Mrs. Jose, your application has been approved. We will memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting. You don't need to be present for that. We will send that document to you, but you'll need that document to get your permit.
We are very happy, sir. Thank you so much.
Have a great night. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's keep this party rolling. Item number nine, 22 dash ZB dash 32V, Lakshmi Vandula.
Yep. Yes, Chairman, good evening. I'm here.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing pretty good. Good evening, sir.
Good.
Mr. Vandula, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I'll give the truth.
Thank you. Your name and address, please?
My name is Lakshmi Vandula, 2 Water Street, Piscataway, zip code 08854.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
Sure, sir. So I would like to install a six feet tall, solid white vinyl fence on the property line, uh, which is in the, it's a corner lot on the Water Street and the Popular Road. So I submitted the application for the variance, for to install the fence. And from the Popular Road, I requested for the three feet offside, only from the Popular Road side. And in any case, on the Water Street side, I have a 35 feet offside because of the garage and all. So that's why I requested for the variance, sir.
Mr. Vandula, have you had a chance to look at Mr. Hinterstein's report of May 9th, 2022?
Yes, sir. I did look into that yesterday. I received in the mail. I did look into the email.
And he's recommending that the fence be relocated to a minimum of 15 feet from the property line, so as not to impact the site triangle at the corner?
Yes, sir. But that, that's why I did say, because otherwise I'll be losing a lot of space. I still see there's a 35 feet, so my request is if we can at least make to five feet, in the 15 feet, five or 10, I would be very much obliged for that fence.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this report usually, uh, relies on Mr. Hinterstein's opinion, uh, with regard to the fence setback?
Yeah, Mr. Vandula, we, we rely heavily upon the, um, the findings of our experts, in this case, Mr. Hinterstein. And, uh, if you would be willing to do the 15 feet that he recommended, we'd be, uh, I'm more than confident that we would approve this application for you to see there.
All right, I'm gonna, whoever phones it is, there you go.
Put the phones on by, big people. Did you hear that before the phone rang, sir?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's how they began.
What I would say is that we rely very heavily upon the site impact and the recommendations of our experts. Uh, in this case, Mr. Hinterstein, the township engineer. And, uh, if you would adhere to his recommendation of the 15 feet, I can virtually guarantee you that this application would be met favorably.
Okay, so even if it is 10 feet, it's not going to help, right?
No.
If you make that request for 10 feet. Okay.
No, 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 what is, uh, I'd say, uh, site impact, uh, issue like this, we, we rely heavily upon the, the safety of the, um, uh, motorists and the residents of the surrounding area, so that 15 feet is a good compromise, quite honestly.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Then I have the option either to go with the approval or I can still go with the, in case the picket fence laid is, it's not, if I still want to make use of my full property line, I can go with the picket fence, right? Then I will submit the, uh, application accordingly. So I'm, I'm agreeing with the 15.
If you wanted to go with a four foot high, 50% solid fence, you still have that option.
Okay, sir. Thank you. So I, uh, thank you very much. I, I, I have no choice, so I will accept.
Fantastic. We, we love when the residency eye to eye with the township. It's great stuff. Can we, uh, anybody else on the board have any questions or comments for this application? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public portion have any comments or questions for this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
No one? Okay. Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public portion and I'm gonna make a recommendation, uh, to approve this application with Mr. Vandula's, um, word that they're going to move it to 15 feet. Can I get a second?
Thank you very much.
I got it. Out of second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Vandula, your, your application as amended has been approved. Uh, we will memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting. You don't need to be present for that. We will mail that document to you and you'll need that to get your permits.
Thank you, Mr. Vandula.
Have a good night, sir. Good luck, Mr. Vandula.
Good night, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, item number 10, 22 dash ZB dash 24V, Rajat Kumar? Yes.
Mr. Kumar, present?
Yes.
Good evening, sir.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Name and address, please?
My name is Rajat Kumar. Address is 517 New Durham Road, Piscataway, New Jersey, 08854.
And what, what is it that you're asking the board for tonight?
Well, I have, uh, I need multiple variants, actually, uh, because I want to construct, um, on the side of the house, uh, first floor, including, uh, second floor and connecting with, you know, my existing, uh, house. And I will be adding around 300, uh, square feet on the first floor and then on the second floor, about, uh, 636 feet, square feet.
And Mr. Hinterstein's report noted that your survey did not appear to be accurate.
Yeah, I just, actually, I, uh, I received, uh, the letter memorandum yesterday and today I sent, uh, to Laura, my updated, uh, you know, survey, which includes, uh, all the, uh, everything, including the existing shed, which, uh, also I need, uh, variance for that. I mean, yeah.
And, and also, like, that also identifies a lot of coverage variance, is that correct?
Uh, yes, so my, right now, according to calculation, um, my new square feet will be two, one, two, four square feet, which coming to 22.65% of the, uh, building, uh, coverage.
And, and who performed those calculations for you?
Uh, well, I, I spoke to my architect and that's where we, uh, uh, did that. Because, uh, for some reason, uh, he didn't, uh, include, uh, the, the porch roof in the back, in the calculations, and as well as the shed, for some reason.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, this revised drawing was just received today and has not had, uh, not been reviewed by Piscataway staff. Uh, I'm not sure that the board can go forward with this application tonight. I think you should adjourn this.
Yeah.
Staff an opportunity to review it.
Yeah, I totally agree, Mr. Kenealy. Um, Laura, what do we have next? What's the next date available?
I mean, we could put him on for May 26th, because we already have it. I don't want him to wait a whole nother month.
Mr. Kumar, are you okay with that? We have the, uh, we have to be afforded the opportunity to look at these new revised, uh, survey.
Yes.
Uh, based on that, I think we're gonna adjourn this tonight and move it to, uh, what was that, did he, Laura?
May 26th.
May 26th, is that okay with you, sir?
Yes, I'm okay. I have just one question regarding the shed, uh, location and the setback. I mean, uh, I, I, I saw the previous meetings on YouTube. Uh, I mean, I, I know I have less space on the side, the setback. On one side is four, and on the other side is three, and the requirement is eight. I'm happy to relocate it, you know, if, if you guys want, in the meantime, you know.
Mr. Kumar, that might be a question better posed to Mr. Hinterstein when he's available. Um, let, let him answer that. And, uh, at this point, we'll, we'll just move it to, uh, the 26th.
Yeah.
And Mr. Hinterstein will be here to address whatever other issues and questions you might have.
All right, sounds good.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
So anybody here on two more application, it's gonna be carried to May 26th with no further notice by the applicant. The only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Let's move on to item number 12, 22 dash ZB dash 34V, Stephen Valicky? Did I butcher that name or is that the how it's pronounced?
That's good.
Okay, I tried.
Sir, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please?
Stephen Valicky, 433 Rushmore Avenue, Piscataway.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
I'm looking to remove the three existing sheds, it's like 30 years old, and build a 18 by 34, 612 square foot detached garage. And on the one side, looking to go off, four foot off the property line, so I could keep an existing maple tree that I have in the yard.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Hinterstein has rendered a report in this matter, uh, has several comments. Mr. Valicky, have you had a chance to see that?
Yeah, I got something yesterday from him.
Hey, can you address the comments that he made?
Uh... I got, uh, he, he recommended a six foot side, side yard setback. Uh... The only problem with that is I have to cut down a tree if I do that, or make this garage smaller.
It's right, it is a large garage that you're proposing.
Yeah. And the other one, road opening permit. Uh, on last year or the year before that, they were doing the sidewalks on my, on my street. And I talked about doing my sidewalk and they said, uh, my tree raised the sidewalk. And they wouldn't touch my tree roots, because if they did the sidewalk and cut the roots, their response would be the tree falls down. So I'm just looking to replace the existing sidewalk in the front. Myself. And for the fence on the one side, there is a five foot 10 stockade fence on that side of the property, where the garage is going.
That's a little, that's a very big garage, sir.
Yeah.
Um, no, I'm, I'm, if I could do it in my backyard, I would as well. I mean, everybody wants more than they, uh, than they currently have, obviously, but, um...
I know the square, the square footage, but I know the max is 25 by 25, but
Right.
That stands for some, some people's yards, because I have a narrow yard.
I know you have the narrow yard. You wanna keep it 18 feet on the one side. Um, if you were to, to make it 18 by 25, I mean, I'm not, I don't, I don't want you to cut that tree down, to be honest with you. Um...
What if, what if I go like 16 by 38? That's 600 square feet, 608 square feet. I'd go a little bit small and I can leave the tree there, and I could go six foot off the property line.
You know what? Maybe we should move this to when Mr. Hinterstein is available and, uh, he can let you, um, he can work with you on this in terms of compromise. I don't, I don't want to, it, it, it's not gonna get approved at, uh, 18 by 34, I can tell you that. If, unfortunately, he's not available right now, but I don't want to vote on this tonight, because I don't think that it will be voted favorably, um, because of the size of it. I'd like you, I'd like you and him to actually, uh, get together and iron out a, um, a compromise, which is in both township and your best interest. So if we could move this over, um, Laura, how many, uh, apps do we have on the 26th?
I had a bunch pull off, so we can put them on the 26th also.
I, I hate to do it to you, sir, but I, I, I run the risk of, of not approving this tonight if we were to vote on it, because of the, based on the size that is right now.
Okay, yeah, I'd rather him and see what he's, what he suggests.
Yeah, he's very amiable and we can work with you guys and come up with a, a, a better solution for both parties. So let's, let's move this off to the 26th?
Yes.
Okay, so anybody here in the application of Stephen Valicky, it's gonna be carried to May 26th with no further notice by the applicant. The only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, have a good night.
You too, sir. Let's move on to item number 13, 22 dash ZB dash 33V, Paul Cotterell?
Is Mr. Cotterell, please, present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, sir, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Read the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
All right.
Name and address, please?
Uh, Paul Cotterell, 146 Maria, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Cotterell. Could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
Uh, I'm looking to put, uh, a small addition off the back of the house. It's a 12 foot approximately by 19 feet, single floor, and a s- small deck on the side, off the side of the addition. And I believe I have to discuss moving my fence in a little bit as well. I've got a revised thing from the, uh, the, the architect guy. Says I gotta move the fence, so I guess I'm moving the fence, because I heard the testimony from earlier, so it's the other stuff.
Yes, that identified, that, uh, uh, answers one of Mr. Hinterstein's comments. Also, your existing survey appears to be inaccurate. It doesn't show everything?
Yeah, it's old. It's old.
So you're gonna have to supply, uh, a, a revised drawing so that the township can get a hold of what's actually out there?
Okay, you, I was saying a new survey?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we have some questions about the, uh, the existing decks. Could you address that in item number two?
Yes, uh, the, uh, existing deck that's on the back of the house is in the exact location where the, uh, addition is gonna go. It's the exact same size, so that's just gone. It will be gone and the addition will be there, so that'll just be removed off the house. And the smaller one that's on the side, uh, is gonna remain, uh, but it's actually built separate from the other one all by itself, so... I mean, anyone can look at it or would do whatever needs to be done to it to, uh, fortify it.
The deck to the rear of the building will be removed for the, the addition?
That's, yeah, that's exactly where the proposed addition is gonna be.
And the, the entire deck will be removed?
All of it.
And then could you identify or, uh, address, uh, paragraph three that talks about the proposed deck along Poe Place?
Uh, yeah, that's a, a little 10 by 10 that comes off the side of the, the proposed addition. It's basically steps that go down to the ground, the grill. You know, it'd be nice if you could put a little teeny table or something, so you could sit there and have a coffee, but...
Yeah, and Mr. Hinterstein's comment was it kind of creates an excessive front yard setback, uh, variance. Uh, have you explored alternative sites or alternatives?
We have. We presently have the alternative with the door on the back of the house. Everything just moves back where it is. And it just doesn't work. We've, we've got a kitchen planned, uh, it just doesn't jive with the inside, shall we say, unfortunately, but... We thought, uh, you know, we didn't think, there's nothing there between those two houses. It's me and my neighbor across the street and there's nothing really going on there. So I didn't think it was, uh, encroaching too much. I didn't know what the setback was.
And Mr. Cotterell has already agreed to paragraph four, uh, requesting the relocation of the fence. Uh, Mr. Chairman, those are all the comments that, uh, Mr. Hinterstein has. I'm not sure, um, if the board is satisfied, uh, without hearing Mr. Hinterstein's reactions to the...
I, I, I agree. I would say, I'm so sorry, guys, I apologize. Um, I would agree and say that we put this off as well, so Mr. Hinterstein can address the, um, counterproposal that Mr. Cotterell is offering, or, um, his explanation of some of the, uh, site impact, um, statements that Mr. Hinterstein has made. Um, Mr. Cotterell, are you okay also for coming back on the 26th, so you could talk to Mr. Hinterstein directly? And also by then, we should have the accurate survey?
Uh, yeah, two weeks. You're saying two weeks today, right?
Yeah, thanks for me.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do that. Let's move it to the 26th.
And I just give the survey to Laura?
Yes.
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 Okay, see you in two weeks.
So anybody here on the Cotterell application, it is being adjourned until May 26th with no further notice by the applicant. The only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight.
And I'll get an email with a link, right?
Yes, I will email you. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, sir.
You too, thank you.
Uh, let's move to item number 14, 22 dash ZB dash 28V, Darmin Patel.
Yes, hello, I'm here.
Mr. Patel, we need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Name and address for the record?
Darmin Patel, 2 Ambrose Valley Lane, Piscataway, New Jersey, 08854.
Uh, could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here? You gonna put your hand down?
Yeah, so I'm looking to put, uh, fence, um, where the easement is, and then also looking to potentially do a sunroom and a deck as well.
And you understand that if the township ever needs access to that easement, it would be your responsibility and cost to remove and replace that fence?
Yes.
Okay. Looks to be about it.
Yeah, I don't think Mr. Hinterstein had any other comments on this.
Great. Any other members of the board have any questions about this application or comments? Hearing none, I will open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a, uh, offer to, uh, approve this application. Can I get a second?
Out of second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Patel, your application's been approved. Uh, we will memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting. Present for that. We will mail that document to you, but you'll need that to get your permits.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good luck, sir. Have a great evening.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Let's move along to item number 15, adoption of the resolutions from the regular meeting of April 28th, 2022.
The first resolution is my... Uh, the first resolution is my, this was an application that was approved by the board. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
We can't hear you, Jim, when you turn your head.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
There you go.
Minarondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next resolution, Bala Subramanian. This was an application that was denied by the board, so a vote yes is to affirm the denial. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Um, did Mr. Ali appear?
No.
Okay, Mr. Cahill?
Yes.
Next, Resolution Jason Dolphin. This was an application that was approved. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is Heather Bailey. This application was approved. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Craig and Vinnie Newton. This was an application that was approved for a two-family home. They had requested a three-family home. That was denied. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is Maxine Real Estate. This application was approved. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.